Good evening. Thank you for joining us here for our, for hopefully what is going to be one of many upcoming town halls. This one's gonna be tonight about our PNC parking lot, PNC parking lot. What is going to be one of our new downtown parking lot in Little Falls. As many of you may be aware, one of the concerns that I have heard a lot of over the past couple of years is that there's not enough downtown parking in Little Falls. And we were presented with an opportunity a couple of years ago to acquire the PNC parking lot at what was a tremendous deal for the township of Little Falls. Essentially fifty percent market value of this PNC parking lot. Which was an opportunity that we could not really pass. And the township was able to acquire this lot, a deal with PNC. And we were successfully able to acquire this lot for, again, fifty percent market value. And it is now the township's lot. We were also, over the past couple of years, able to acquire three adjoining properties. The first three homes on Stanley Street that abut this parking lot. Which are going to enable us to create a downtown parking lot that will encompass a large area here that are going to really promote access to our downtown, that immediately touches our downtown and provide our residents with, you know, again, really great parking access to our downtown. And again, I want to thank the council for the past couple of years supporting this vision for our downtown parking to enable our residents to have this downtown park. Now, this leads to the next issue. And why we are all here this evening. And what this does is it creates the next thing that we all need to come together to do. And that's come up with, what is the best plan to help all of the residents in town and all of you who may be near this lot? In coming up with the best plan to allow all of us to have a parking lot in the downtown that creates a safe environment and allows all of you that live in this neighborhood to have peace there while living at home near what would be, well, what was always a parking lot, but would be a public parking lot. With whether it be traffic, whether it be parking, and all the things that come along with that. So what we've done is, we've had our, one of our township engineers assist in creating a number of downtown parking plans in this lot. And another thing that we've done is we've been in communication with our schools, School One in particular, and our superintendent in discussing our Stanley Street, the small portion of Stanley Street that's a one-way. And whether or not Stanley Street was a benefit to school or not, or something that we should discuss incorporating as part of this downtown parking. And School One and our superintendent has been somewhat clear in that they believe that Stanley Street is a bit of a safety hazard for them and something that they are completely fine with eliminating from the area of this parking lot and having the township incorporate in the parking lot. Now, I understand how that could potentially cause issues for our neighbors in that area because some of our residents may utilize Stanley Street frequently. And that's something that we wanted to talk to all of the residents about and all of our neighbors about that may use Stanley Street frequently and how that may impact them. So that's why we're having this meeting tonight, to talk to everybody, to see what is the best plan for everybody. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our engineer Joe Cimanti, who created several plans that talk about several various parking options in this lot and how we can potentially maximize parking. Some plans include Stanley Street, some plans don't include Stanley Street. And go through the various options that we may have in our downtown PNC parking lot here. And what we may be able to do moving forward here with this lot. So what I'm gonna do without further ado is turn it over to our engineer Joe Cimanti, who again came up with several iterations of this lot and what we may be able to do. And then I'm gonna come back and talk to all of you, answer some questions and have some discussions. And again, there's nothing in stone here. It's just several plans. And we may ultimately, again, none of these, it doesn't have to be any one of these plans that we talk about in particular. It could be some combination of these plans. It may be none of these plans. So let's have some discussion tonight and let's see what we can do to come up with a plan that works best for the township, as well as all of you who may live in very close proximity to Stanley Street and to this PNC parking lot. So Joe, I'm gonna ask you to come up here and just go through several of the versions of this plan that you come up with.
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, my name is Joe Cimanti. I'm an engineer with Boswell Engineering. I do serve on many of the capital projects in town. Very familiar with the town. Actually grew up in West Patterson, Latham Park. But it's always West Patterson, maybe. Basically, the mayor and council charged us with coming up with some alternatives. So what we did was we came up with five options. And really, the options have to do with more alignment of traffic stalls, of parking stalls, and maximizing the number of parking spaces for each scenario. So what I'm gonna go do is, I'm gonna go through each option, one by one. It just could be a kind of the overview of what each one entails, the parking yield that we get from that, and then we'll move on to the next. And then obviously, at the end, the mayor obviously said when he comes back, we'd be happy to answer questions. Again, these are all concepts. There's no real engineering at this point. It's purely just geometry and fitting. The design comes out of the iterative process between the public, the governing body and the engineer to come up with the most workable to the community that's surrounding communities. But with that, we'll start with option one. Option one incorporates a ninety-degree parking. Not angled, ninety degrees. So you'll see, based on the layout here, this layout incorporates the existing parking lot and not Stanley Street. The yield of this parking lot, once, when we lay in the, all the parking, we end up getting fifty-seven parking stalls. Now, in our initial conversations with the mayor and council, we talked about dedicating eight spots to the school. Now, that was a number picked out of the air. There was no actual hard and fast number. So what we did was we incorporated some spots that were quasi-dedicated for school overflow parking for School One. So the count, based on this orientation for option number one, would be seventy-seven parking stalls. Those parking stalls are ten foot by twenty foot, ten foot wide by twenty foot deep. I went with ten foot by twenty foot wide because if you've ever been to a parking lot that's a little bit smaller, it gets to be tough. So we tried to make this as user-friendly. We made nice wide parking aisles at twenty-four feet and parking stalls that were adequate to get in and out of. I think it makes a lot of sense. For the yield, the additional yield would change those spots negatively. So I thought it was more important that the parking lot be user-friendly. So, option number one, again, fifty-seven stalls. We did account for bus parking right here. So there's bus parking that was originally over here in the area of one of these vacant lots. The mayor had asked that we accommodate parking for the buses. So we made an accommodation for parking stalls along Stanley. Because we had this empty space here, we created what I'll call a plaza area. It's basically unassigned at this point. We don't know what it is, but it's gonna be covered. So we'll make a safety area so that it'll be a refuge for kids to line up to get on buses or whatever. But at this point, it's not big enough for a parking stall for a bus. But it's not, it's not so small that we should just leave it there. All right? This is basically just everything I went over. Option number two. Option number two, if I would, let me just go back to this one. Option number one, I'm sorry. The primary and only access point is along Stevens. Where everybody comes in and out off of Stevens. Sure. There are an allocation, three handicap stalls right here, one van accessible, two cars. And based on the number of fifty-seven, that's the appropriate number of ADA stalls for this size parking lot. No problem. Next up, option number two is almost identical to option number one with one major difference. The major ingress, oh, wrong button. The ingress egress point is now on Stanley. Takes it away from Stevens. Now you're bringing in the exit point onto Stanley. Same amount of stalls, same orientation. So it's the same ten by twenty stalls, the same twenty-four foot wide parking drive aisles, same three ADA parking stalls. And again, we have the bus parking in the plaza area down here. Again, unassigned space. Yes, sir?
Again, I know you're talking later too, but doesn't that, on that Stanley Street where all the kids are, is that really small? I think it works coming in and out like that.
Well, I'll tell you, it's not my preferred option, but it's an option. I wanted to explore all options. There's pros and cons there. The next option, which I'm gonna show you, yes? No, no, there's no traffic study. It's really just a loading study for amount of parking. So it's an existing parking lot. Ingress egress is currently there now. Right? Yes, sir?
Can we move away from that potential area because like you're talking about fields? You're talking about people getting on the bus?
These buses, the bus balls right here?
Up there, yeah. It seems to be like, what are you doing on Stanley Street? That would your thing?
No, they're actually right next to the school. This is the field there. So it's on the road of parking. They're gonna be loading in, in Ridge now. Oh, I didn't realize. They actually park on Ridge now. So this actually takes it further away from the rest. Oh, okay. Go ahead. I'm not sure about this.
That's the two small buses that currently park on Ridge now. So there's the two small buses that currently park on Ridge now. And what happens is those two small buses currently park, so you may be familiar, I know you're familiar with the area. There's a bunch of angled parking along Ridge currently. And the school eliminated, I'm gonna call it about eight to ten angled parking spaces on Ridge to fit two buses that park essentially parallel with Ridge. And by eliminating the two buses from Ridge, they could probably fit about ten more teacher cars on Ridge. So by just moving two buses to this area here, they'd be able to get about ten more teacher vehicles onto Ridge. So that's why we were talking about relocating just the two small buses that currently park on Ridge a little bit further, just moving them a little bit on Ridge, rather than keeping them where they currently are, to fit about ten more teacher cars on Ridge. Sure. No, they'd still be on the back end of Ridge where Ridge firmly intersects with there. So they're just moving up them, you know, a hundred and fifty feet. No, no, the houses are still where now it's where Ridge, so Ridge, that's where Ridge and Stanley currently intersect right there. So they'd still be on the intersection of Ridge and Stanley where they currently intersect. Right, that's the corner of Ridge and Stanley on the bottom right of that photo there. So we're essentially just moving them a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet further north from where they are now to allow, again, the ten parking spaces where the two buses park to be utilized as ten parking spaces rather than two buses.
The teachers park now?
So, so, that's a great question. So one of the things that happens now is, we have a number of teachers park actually in the lot directly across from us here at the former municipal building. The old municipal building and police station lot. That's where we see dozens of teacher vehicles. And as you may be aware, that lot, that building is currently under construction by the Historical Society. And we anticipate that that building will be opened in the relatively near future and need and require the parking spaces that are there. So one of the things that we are looking to do is to get the teachers out of the lot at Thirty-Five Stevens where the Historical Society currently has that building under construction and get them A into the ten spaces that are currently on Ridge where those two buses are. And B, get a number of them, and again, probably more than eight of them into the new lot that is being built where those homes currently are along Stanley Street there. So, sure.
The teachers are all filling up the two people down there. During the day, it's full. And it's all teachers. They're not parking. They might be parking in the municipal lot. But they're also filling up this lot.
Sure, they're already parking there, absolutely.
Maybe, maybe, there's more than a spot left during the day. One other question is, so this access entrance point on Stanley, to get close to the PNC bank building, you have to make a right all the way to the end of the lot, make a left, loop around, and come all the way back around? That, and after the same with the other one? Yeah, is that it there?
It's the flow. That is correct, sir.
What's the distance between, bring your pointer to the far right? Yeah, right in there. What is, keep moving slightly to the, right in there, what is the distance? Right there, what is that distance width? What is that width there for laying the two traffic? No, not there.
Just try to count stalls. I know what you're talking about.
Every parking space is ten feet.
Yeah, so I'm just counting down.
Find that right side and meet in the long line of end of the parking.
I'm gonna do it again.
Seven parking spaces in one time.
Two hundred feet.
On the parking doors. We're going about this distance here. What, is there, is there, is there a move here? Twenty-one feet. Okay.
Please walk on that side.
Couldn't see the twenty-one feet there. So there's enough for two cars to come and go and pass.
But no cars will be passing unless they're waiting for a car to allow it because it's all one-way traffic in this lot.
Not two-way traffic. We're proposing circular traffic.
Move around the other spot there.
Traffic is gonna go counterclockwise.
Right, we're proposing all one-way traffic, all circular traffic in this.
And seemingly it would be first, in a higher rank, determined.
Correct.
If you said last night, Mr. Mayor, the bus stop is not gonna be moved in.
Absolutely.
Is it okay and approved by the Department of Defense?
It was never, it was never, we were initially going to propose to them that they move it here. That DOT move it here, or that Transit move it here. They'd never approved it going in here. So it was never going to happen. It was part of the Transit Village that was never approved by New Jersey Transit. All right, so.
What if the buffer zone from the next town sets on Stanley? So we were looking like it's right up on.
It is. Sure, there's a small, there's, there's, there is a relatively small buffer between where the car. Sure, so we would definitely be in conversations where you talk about adding, whether it be fencing and a buffer, whether it be trumps and whatever type of, you know, greenery we could add between you and the lot. To ensure that.
Not sure yet, because this is conceptual, but you're talking about at least a ten-foot buffer. So you plant some marble bindings, maybe get a fence in there as well. So somewhere around ten feet. And then you'll obviously have the side of the curb and the aisle and then the curb.
And now with this, this way out loud, it's true.
Yes, sir.
It's still a one-way.
Oh, yeah. In order to maximize parking, we wanted to keep the traffic moving in one direction. Because number one, it's safer. Number two, it creates a little bit better flow around the parking lot and a little more order. And we can actually take advantage of sending out some of the access drive down. And like I said, option two and option one are basically the same layout, just with a change in ingress egress space. Moving on to option number three. Option number three also incorporates a ninety-degree parking stall, ten by twenty. In this scenario, we are now taking the right-of-way of Stanley Street and basically creating park. The difference between this layout and options one and option two work out to a thirty parking stall increase in available park. So what that would work out to be is a total amount of parking spaces of eighty-seven parking spaces, seventy-nine of which were called public parking and eight of which were called public school overflow parking. Again, that was just a fictitious idea of what that would be. The aggregate is eighty-seven parking stalls. There we go. Okay. Option number four. We tried to look at different geometries to see if we could increase the parking. We went with a thirty-degree angled parking. Thirty-degree angled parking, actually. I can do that.
You have a presentation.
There we go. Thank you, officer. All right, so. Okay, gotcha. Okay. So option four is thirty-degree angled parking. The reason why we did this was really to try and see if we'd be able to yield some additional parking spaces. In fact, we did the opposite. We actually lost spaces utilizing thirty-degree angled parking. We weren't able to shrink the drive aisles a bit, but we lost parking because of the length of the parking stall. They still have a ten-foot width, but they were quite a bit longer because they're on an angle. The yield of parking on this is actually fifty-five stalls. The best we could do with option three was, again, eighty-seven stalls. So it's considerably less parking. It's not as efficient. We do, we do get a little tight down on the ends. Again, it's twenty-one feet, but because of all the wasted space with chevrons and the angles that we have, it's really not a very efficient parking method. We went one step further and basically tried a forty-five-degree angled parking stall. And we got a couple more parking stalls out of this. We get a total yield of seventy-one stalls. But again, there's a lot of wasted space with the Chevron, with the crosshatching and the way it lays, all of which we had to accommodate for ADA parking spots. There are two in this, there are two in the previous, there are four in the overall larger option. These two options utilize Stanley Court as well. Again, they're not the most efficient utilities in space. If we were to not use Stanley, Stanley Street, we would end up losing parking even more. So it would be even less parking. Based on the analysis that we've done, we feel that option three, which is the ninety-degree parking, utilizing the Stanley Street right-of-way yields the most parking and it actually provides for the best layout. We, in the analysis, we did not agree with utilizing Stanley for ingress egress for safety reasons, but obviously we showed it in priority and for completeness. But basically where we're at right now is conceptual. Obviously, we're gonna take the information game here and through, you know, other meetings with the mayor and council. And we'll come up with a plan going forward from there. One thing that we are looking at in the future, not part of this phase, would be a walkway connected in here. I know the mayor has some longer-range plans, talking to the property owners about gaining easements and then putting a walkway in there. Based on topography, I don't see it as an ADA walkway. You have your ADA access over on Stevens. And basically, at this point, we're, you know, we're through the conceptual phase. There'll be, you know, some striking, some signage. It's a very straightforward project. We'll mill and pave this. It'll be a new surface. Some curbs, some sidewalks, some buffering. There'll be a guide relevance here to utilize Stanley Street because of obviously the interaction with the school kids. So we would wanna make sure that that is separated. And again, the bus parking here is a throw-in, for lack of a better term. We had some usable space that can be there. I mean, we have buses there now, so I assume we can keep them there, but that'll be up to the planning phase of what we do with that. Yes, sir?
Total number of spaces that the school requires, regardless of where they are. How many, how many parking spaces do you need to accommodate the school? I think we need to know because I'm confused. I tried parking there a couple of days ago and the lot was pretty full. And figure out whether we're building a lot for the school or whether we're building it for business. I realize it's a combination. But it would seem to me that, that, you know, if I were a teacher, I would park across the street in this lot. So, so what would, how does the plan accommodate the situation where everybody in the school decides, this is pretty great. Let's all park in this particular lot. How many spaces would the teach, would the school take and how many are left?
I'll have to defer on the numbers.
I don't know the specific, I don't know the specific number of teachers, administrators and, and, you know, aides that are around the school, but I'm sure I can get that number.
Well, it seems to be, that's the denominator. The one thing that's sure of is, is that the people who work at the school are gonna park in this lot. So what we need to figure out is how many spaces are left over, regardless of which is how many spaces are left over for other people to use in order to accommodate what we originally were talking about with this lot. And that is to have a place to park so people can visit the stores in the town.
Sure. So listen, I, and I absolutely agree with you. And, you know, I would also venture to say that our highest parking demand and need is not typically Monday to Friday between the hours of eight and three, you know, eight-thirty and three. It's usually the other hours and that's one of the beauties of the shared parking concept. That this lot will be, you know, available to people who are using the restaurants, who are not the teachers on the nights and weekends, and to people who are using the diner, you know, the mornings and the other hours. And, you know, again, so it'll have a shared parking concept. But the plan, and I think, again, this is part of the conversation that we need to have and part of what I'm looking to do here tonight, is, you know, I think a certain section of this lot needs to be designated for teachers if teachers are going to be utilizing it. And it would be frankly the less convenient section of the lot, which I would consider to be, you know, the further back portion, you know, the right side of this picture of the lot where the teachers should be, should be parking. So that residents can utilize the portion of the lot closer to Stevens or closer to the walkway where they can access Main Street and those stores, or Stevens Ave and our library and those types of buildings. And again, I think that's something that, again, is, if the school and teachers are gonna be able to utilize this, that's something we should do. And if the school needs to institute a sticker that's on teachers' vehicles, that's something that we can talk to them about. You know, and again, I think there's a lot of things that we can do to ensure that the public and residents in Little Falls have the most and greatest access to this lot. Because you're right, this is not a lot that's being built for the school and for teachers to have exclusive access. Sure.
There's a follow-up, to make sure I got the numbers right, I missed them before. So over on Ridge, where there's already a couple dozen teacher parking spots, we're adding, what was it, about how many more?
I believe we gained a delta of about eight to ten spaces where two buses currently park because they park, again, two buses parallel right now to Ridge where they can easily also pull out right now.
So if we combine that.
So we relocate those two buses into some parallel, into some nose-in parking spaces here, like you see. I believe we gain another eight to ten parking spaces with some angled parking along Ridge that would, you know, again, where we could have additional teachers park now.
For like sixteen to twenty additional spots, at the end of the day, more than what we have today, the teachers.
We're good. That's even if we only give them eight right now in this lot, correct? Sure.
Do we have a budget of how much this whole, the brutal cost? And you said that the parking lot was fifty percent off. But how much do the houses cost that are being taken away? And, you know, because obviously we both know where the money's coming from and how much it's going to be. And lastly, maybe I was stoned to that, but can a teacher park on Main Street? I mean, is that like a legal law? Can you have special stickers and have them park on Stevens?
But they, so.
Sorry, I mean, it's a tree and I never seen them park there. Right, that's why I didn't have the teachers sticker. I mean, others did, they had a children's teacher.
So, again, yeah, so what we do is, we try to, for most of our businesses in town, so what we do to assist most of our businesses in town is we try to keep, usually, so on-street parking is, I would call it, the best or premium parking that most people desire to get. Right, so Main Street parking, Stevens Ave parking is the premium parking, the most desired parking. And most of our businesses and our business owners want to see the most turnover of those parking spaces. The parking space in front of Big Daddy's, Taco Affair, every downtown business, those business owners are looking to have turnover of those spaces.
I'm talking about in front of this hole and then going up the street.
Yeah, well, Stevens Ave is also a street that's looking to have a number of businesses directly at Paulson School. At Thirty-Five Stevens Ave, whether it be, hopefully soon moving there, will be the even in the being. So I'm using that, they will, they'll have some of their own. So my point is this, the on-street parking. So, my point is this, the on-street parking is the most desirable part. And the intention here is to get the teachers into the absolute least desirable parking spaces. No offense to any teachers in the room, but the point is to get them into the least desirable parking, which is this parking lot, so that our premium parking, our best parking spaces are most convenient for a parent who's picking up a sick child. They can then park right in front of the school, walk into the main door, and pick up their sick child when they need to bring them home from school, when they're sick, rather than having a teacher park there for eight hours a day. So, putting them in this corner of the lot and making them walk the furthest on that cloudy, muggy, little bit drizzly day, you know, and again, I'm not disparaging teachers in any way, and I don't mean to be offensive in any way, but the point here is, is that they're employees of the municipality, and they are, we're trying to provide them with, you know, again, an easy access to the school where they know they will have a parking space each and every day. And by doing so, we're providing them with these parking spaces. But we're also allowing our residents, our business owners, our, you know, anyone that's visiting the town, we're trying to give them the most desirable spaces, which are the Main Street, the on-street parking spaces often times. So, by doing this, we're accommodating everybody's needs and everybody's desires here. So, that's why we're putting them here. So, sure, so these, everything has been acquired over a number of years. I do not remember the specific figures, I can certainly get them to you. This has been over four or five years now since we've been acquiring each of the lots. So, I don't recall off the top of my head what has caused the purchase. There've been four separate transactions between the lot itself and each of these three homes. So, I don't know off the top of my head what each of them has cost, but I can certainly get those figures.
And you said about paying for it?
I don't know. Is there a rough figure yet? Very rough. So, obviously, we're in concept. The project is not very technical, knowing, paving, paint, curb. We're looking at somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to start. Now that we're going to talk about buffering and rails and things, so it's still in flux, but we're in that general area.
It looks like there's fifty-seven teachers, administrators. And then you've got whatever page there is, sixty-five? Spots that you...
I believe it's more in my last question, eighty? Yeah, yeah, anywhere they can, that's the... So, turn back.
Who utilized that lot for on-street parking during snow removal?
Yeah, so this is another thing, right? And we do accommodate residents. So, oftentimes, we, right now, we've used the Morris Canal Lot in the past during snowstorms. Yeah, this is another lot that residents will be able to utilize during, you know, snow events, you know, or something that, I'm sorry? For overnight parking?
Yeah.
So, overnight parking, residents are permitted to park on the street for overnight. So, there's no issue there, per se. During snow events, though, residents are not permitted to be on road. No, right now, it's not. That is something else that I do intend to have, again, another resident-involved meeting with, talking about either Main Street and these lots at some point. Right now, now figuring out a way to have vehicle turnover on Main Street is something that I want to talk about, but there are a number of other ways to do that without it necessarily being metered parking per se. So, because business owners have come to me, and again, we have another meeting about that at some point, but right now, metering the lots is not necessarily something that is going to happen. It's just something that can be discussed in the future. So, sure. Option one was without Stanley Street, ingress and egress from Stevens Ave, and it was forty, fifty-seven total stalls. Same on our parking, just ingress and egress in a different location, all right?
Three is the one that yields the most parking. It's that.
Eighty-seven total stalls, but this includes Stanley Street.
Of those eighty-seven, four are ADA-compliant stalls. Is that all you need for that? Is it permanent?
Eighty-seven, the same number of faculty at the school? The large number of spots, eighty-seven. Somebody just mentioned that there are these eighty-seven people working at the school. I'm trying to figure out the Achilles heel of this thing. You keep saying the teachers will go into the least space. How do you police that? It's raining out, you're a teacher. Are you gonna, how do you distinguish in a parking lot between a teacher's car and a non-teacher's car? I don't get it. I don't get, I don't get how this, how this... I'm trying to figure out, I came here trying, because I'm interested in, I always eat breakfast in town, and I park in that lot. And that's in the morning, by the way. And the lot was almost full a couple of days ago in the morning, about nine o'clock in the morning. So, I can't figure out with the, it seems to me, you really do have to count it. You have to make an assumption that teachers are smart people, they're driving a car, it's raining out, they're going to park in this lot, and they're going to park in the closest space to walk to the school. And you have no way of policing it otherwise. What am I missing?
Also, the cars are now parking on Ridge, parking on Stanley are going to be in there, so there's open spots on the surrounding streets as well.
I understand, but if this is the closest, this is right across the street from the school. They're smart people, teachers.
But I also don't think the teacher, I also believe the teachers aren't, are only allowed to use one or two doors at the school to enter the building, I believe. I may be mistaken. So, I don't think they can just enter at the door that's located right here.
Well, maybe, but...
So, parking here does not provide them with any benefit.
But it seems to me that the missing piece in this whole plan is sitting down with the school and figuring out, based upon human behavior and the number of people who work in the school, whether or not you're building a lot for the school, which is nice, I don't mind doing it, or whether you're building a lot to help the local businesses. And I don't get the numbers that you're throwing out. Somebody's saying that the number of people who work in the school is basically the same as the maximum number of spots. How are you going to get teachers to park in the least?
There is other options to this, and I can give you the super-technical answer to it. And it is that if every teacher's license plate is entered into a system, there are license plate readers that can be put on police vehicles that ensure that there are no teacher vehicles in ninety percent of the lot. And if a police vehicle were to drive through the lot, it would know, based on geofencing, that there's no teacher vehicle and call it the left ninety percent of the lot.
What a nightmare that is.
Because, you know, the police vehicle can literally do one circle through the lot.
Oh, I'm sure it could, but...
The police officer never needs to step out of the vehicle, and in the mail, a ticket gets mailed with zero administrative work. So, the point is this, it is, in twenty-first-century world policing, as simple as doing no work and a police officer driving through the lot one time per day, just on a simple patrol himself, to monitor the lot, just checking the safety of the lot? And in doing so, without him doing any work to making sure that a teacher's vehicle is there, his car electronically confirms that teachers only park in the thirty spaces that teachers are permitted to park in and/or that every other vehicle parked along Ridge Ave, wherever permitted to park. So, I totally agree with you that the intention of this lot is not to provide parking for the school exclusively, and residents have nowhere else to park in downtown. So, I absolutely hear you, and I hear your concern, and I do not believe the township has spent a million dollars, whatever the heck the number is, in acquiring all of these lots and making this improvement to produce eighty-seven spaces, if this was the concept, of teacher parking. So, I absolutely agree with what your position is here in, and we are not intending to create a lot exclusive to the school. So, it is, there is a simple way to do this, and again, that would be a very simple way to do it.
On Ridge, the parking spots with teachers in there, are they parked anyhow? Do the teachers have those stickers in their cars, tags hanging up that you're a teacher and...
I don't believe they do. At school one, I don't believe they do at this time.
Is something that probably would make sense to do?
I believe the spaces are marked for teachers only, but I don't believe the teachers have anything right now designating their vehicles at school one at this time. And again, it's not something that we couldn't easily thought at school about in the future. That's a simple conversation.
Want to make sure that the businesses aren't getting screwed, and the people that live here are willing to go there and frequent their businesses and save money.
Yep, absolutely.
Where the teachers aren't, and again, I have...
Yeah, that's an easy conversation. School two, school two has hand tags on their vehicles. Sure, yeah, like I said, school two has hand tags on their vehicles. Again, I don't think that's the issue. It's just school two, and school one has never had a need for them in the past. Again, I don't think this is a hurdle we can't overcome. This is a pretty simple conversation to have at the schools. This is, so, yeah, to circle back, I had a question about circulation if the lot, I'm sorry, if Stanley is closed in the future. And I know we have a... So, sure, so again, so here's the question. If Stanley is closed in the future, at least between Stevens Ave and where it intersects with Ridge now, how would people get around? And if you live on Stanley itself, the way that you would get there, because right now, at least, the intention is that Ridge itself would remain a one-way here in the southbound direction. So, what does that mean? How would you get to Stanley if you lived between Ridge and Lincoln? There's a couple of options. One is, you would need to use Walnut and come down to Lincoln, down, I'm sorry, yeah, right, down Lincoln, back across Stanley that way, or you would need to go down Main and up Lincoln, and then across Stanley. So, yes, I don't see why Stanley wouldn't remain a two-way street, because the only people that would use Stanley effectively as a two-way street would be the six homes, I mean, the six homes that are on Stanley Street. So, except for the residents, you and your five neighbors, there would be no other reason for nobody else that would use it heading eastbound.
Is there any kind of street closure? Normally, you would come down Stanley, try to come down Ridge and face on Center. You could go down to Walnut, try to get back to Speed. But I mean, there's, that would be...
So, if it was a one-way, I had this conversation earlier with a couple of residents. If it was a one-way, and it would obviously have to be a one-way towards the west, right? Your only option within every town would be to use Ridge. There's no detriment to you or your five neighbors if it remained a two-way, because the only person, the only people that would ever be using it in the eastbound direction would be you and your five neighbors. Because theoretically, nobody else on Ridge could ever come back down that way. If you were ever on Ridge, your only option is to ever go south.
Oh, you guys, the old people, they come down the street, they go past that...
But that road's going to be closed. If this were the, if this were the ultimate design, where Stanley were completely closed in that particular section, I guess there would be, I guess if somebody did come down, you're right, would they turn there and come back? I guess theoretically, if that became a problem, there is a very simple solution. Make it a one-way, if that's what the neighbors ultimately decided in your small section there, if this was the ultimate design. And again, so again, that's something that, if this was the ultimate design, and the neighbors, you know, you and your neighbors decided this needs to be a one-way, that's an easy solution. But again, that's something that could always, again, if this was designed, be decided.
If that's the ultimate end to the whole thing, would they close that part of Stanley? Does the town and app would view traffic setting with all the other streets?
Not necessarily the impacts of that, because of the fact it's a minor collector. This section is a minor collector. This section is serviced by those five homes. It's really not a heavy traffic area. We would do an analysis just to check it, but a full traffic study.
Yeah, they're going to end up coming down Ridge and then coming out, Walnut.
I guess every one of those already comes down Ridge, because they can't go down Stanley, that would be the direction.
If this part that was closed, this would be guardrails with arrows pointing down Ridge, and it would create that...
Anyone that does head down Stanley in that direction can't continue down the rest of Stanley now, because it's a one-way anyway. So, this closure in no way could affect additional traffic unless people are breaking, but do not enter or come out of section of the one-way.
What's that figured in is, the three houses that have been demolished here is also going to be providing parking. So, an asset to and from that.
No, it is incorporated, yeah, if you look here, those are the houses.
The traffic, so there's an increase in number of positive to be parked there. What impact might that have wherever they exit?
Can exit on Stanley where they exit now. And part of what we're doing is actually moving, moving the ingress and egress a little bit further, a stop away from the traffic light, because it is a little bit, again, right now, when you exit the lot, you are all the way at the top of the screen, and you are relatively close to the traffic light, which poses some issues. One of the other things that I would be looking to do in this is adding a "Don't lock the box" on Stevens Ave. I will tell you, we've added one in town recently at the intersection of Montclair Ave, and I know Catherine Bencher was instrumental in pushing for that. The visual impact of a "Don't lock the box," just that crosshatching on the road red, has been, the impact has been incredible. Adding a "Don't lock the box" here, I think the visual impact would also be, again, pretty monumental. When people see that, they really do stop, and I think it would really allow vehicles, anybody who is exiting, anybody who's making the left, to easily be able to exit that lot. And by moving this, again, even though it's not a ton of distance, moving it much further south there would, I think, make a bit of a difference there.
One of my favorite cliches is man plans and God laughs. And I think that you need to sit down with a couple of people in that school and say, "Here's our idea. We're going to ask all the teachers to give us their license number. So, please talk and go running around during the day to make sure they can't park." Now, fast forward, I'm sitting in a lunchroom with five of my fellow teachers and saying, "They want my license number, because if they have my license number, I can't park. But I'm married, I've got two cars. Which license number you think I'm going to give?" I'm just suggesting that I think, I think that the piece of this, we began this evening not even knowing how many cars the school, this, to park. I think we need to sit down with that school and figure out whether or not this grand plan of this cop going around with his automatic thing is going to work. Because if it doesn't work, you're building a parking lot, perhaps, that is primarily for the school, and if that's what you want to do, okay, but at least do it with our eyes open. I, you know, I understand, you know, what I'm... What, what I'm suggesting is we're doing a little bit of improvising about the part of the plan. That, that could be the Achilles heel, and that is the number of school personnel who are likely to use the lot. And whether or not it is practical to come up with it, with a license plate system that would keep them from, from parking in, in a more convenient place.
I think what, um, everybody's generally in our teachers, only eighty-seven people are coming to that parking lot. And they're parking now. And eighty-seven people, or however many people like are hitting that parking lot. And they're not there now. So many of them are staying in the same spots. So I think we're zeroing in so much on the teachers. The other thing is, if you tell the school, or you come to the field at the school. That there are ten people that can park in that spot, there's gonna be ten people parked in this spot. There's not gonna be, there's not gonna be another fifty, whatever. You know, I hate to say, well, I'm a former teacher. Most teachers follow the rules. Most teachers follow the rules. If you see a kid parked there, they're not gonna, they're not gonna try to beat the system. Now, I'm not saying that there's not gonna be one or two that, they tried that. But my point is, I think we're zeroing in so much. On eighty-seven people, eighty-seven teachers are gonna come into that lot and use all the spaces. And I think that's so hard. The point before was, you, you're creating ten where the bus is on. You're creating another eight, that's eighteen spaces right there that you don't have now. Okay, and if you possibly limit two small buses not parking in those other spaces. You may even be able to gain a few more. Maybe, maybe they're the ones that should be parking on, on Main Street or on. Walnut, maybe you could designate a spot for the buses on Walnut. So that would create a few more spaces. But I think, I think we're, we're thinking that the, the entire school is gonna take that lot up. And I gotta be honest with you, I don't see that happening. Right now, I will say I agree with what's being said. I've come into town and, and gone into that space recently. I'm, when I, and I, I say the last maybe month or so, and maybe I'm off. But tho- tho- the lot has filled in, uh, much more than it, it ever was before. So, um, that is a concern. There's, there's no doubt about that. I think we gotta kind of get eighty-seven teachers taking up that lot.
Sure, and, and to your point, if there's been eighty-seven vehicles that teachers drive coming to Little Falls. For the past decade, there's gonna continue to be eighty-seven vehicles driven by teachers coming to Little Falls. That means there's, in, if they, if they all relocate here, there's eighty-seven other spots open somewhere else. Right, now I'm not saying that this lot shouldn't be the one that's used by the teachers. But the point is, to your point, you know, it's not like there's gonna be double the number of teachers coming to Little Falls. Because this lot's being developed. Um, again, I think in working with the schools, we can find a way. That we designate a certain number of spots or a certain portion of this lot. And they will use just those certain number of spaces or that certain portion of the lot, uh, and we'll be able to work with them towards that goal.
Issues because I'm from the opinion that this is basically a school lot. Because the house, well, the properties left in this town is now absorbed and clearly have been sold privately, redeveloped. Why suddenly, then you, what have they?
Yeah, I, I. I, I, sure, I, I, I can tell you why. Because. I can, I can tell you why. Because I hear from residents day in and day out. That they can't find downtown parking. Okay, well, I almost heard a unanimous yes across the room when I just said that. Now, ironically, I agree with you. In the statement that I've never had a problem. Now, I said frequently, I'm also willing to park. And walk however far I need to, to get to whatever business I want to visit. I find it frequently ironic that most people in this room will go to New York City. Park in a garage and then walk thirty-two blocks, right? Then we come back home to Little Falls, and we always look for a space right in front of the store we're trying to get to. I do the same thing. I'm guilty of myself. Um, but everybody here, as I heard in almost unison, uh, after that comment. Finding a space in downtown Little Falls can sometimes be difficult. There's no doubt about it. We have a lot of small businesses that thankfully and luckily for them are very busy. A lot of our downtown small businesses are doing very well, which I absolutely love. But I want them to continue to be able to do well. And I want our residents to not shy away, or not just our residents, but anyone who wants to come to the businesses. I don't want them to shy away from coming to them because they can't find parking. You need to make it convenient for people to park, to come to the businesses in your town. This right here, in my opinion, if we. Forget about the school right now, was a golden opportunity. That is immediately attached to our downtown with almost as flat a walking distance as we could, we could have. To help our residents, anyone that wants to visit Little Falls and our businesses, and we couldn't pass it. Now, some people say, well, go vertical with parking. I will look at our engineer right now. Who I guarantee would have loved the opportunity to design something vertical like a garage. Because going vertical with a garage, I think costs somewhere between two and thirty to fifty thousand dollars of parking space by the time you're done with it. And is that, is that a fair estimate? And it cost an absolute fortune to build parking garages. Look at the ones that have gone up in Morris Town. Look at the ones in, what other towns have, uh, for, for Mount, Mount Claire, some of the other, right, all of these other towns. So acquiring surface parking like these three lots, and I don't disagree with you. Because I, I'm certainly familiar with the real estate market in Little Falls lately. And how astronomical it has been, and I absolutely love that for all of our residents' benefits. Um, but these were three lots that the, that the township was also able to acquire. Uh, at a, at a, at a very, uh, I believe, good rate and price. Uh, and surface parking is absolutely tremendously cheaper, uh, than vertical parking like, like garages. So doing this is, I, in my opinion, to the benefit of the residents, of the businesses, and people who want to visit Little Falls. Uh, and it was something that, again, with the proximity to the downtown, something that we could not pass up. And I absolutely appreciate your concern and why we want to create whatever buffer we need to, to accommodate. You know, our immediate neighbors to whatever this parking, you know, wherever this parking lot would be, and will certainly be in, in downtown.
Drainage, water on that, you know, things like that. And also, there're gonna be a curfew. They're gonna be voiding, you know, I mean, like, and then you mentioned overnight parking.
Again, there's a, you know, as you know, there's a parking lot there now. I don't imagine it being dramatically different from the current parking lot that is there. I know you have obviously a buffer of, of, of you now. But I don't imagine it being dramatically different than, than that.
Uh, do we know how many spots currently are available for the school, teachers, parents, whatever?
Oh, on the streets? Forty?
Forty on Ridge.
Oh, oh, on, on Ridge Ave. Forty's based on Ridge Ave. There's no other spaces in particular that the teachers have. They do currently utilize, as I indicated. Thirty-five Stevens Ave, former municipal building, you know, regular with that. Uh, but again, that's gonna change in the future. Correct, but again, I think they'll pick up another eight to ten on Ridge and then. Right, Ridge, if we look at the lot, might even end up being where the three homes are now theoretically, just on a quick.
As these were the one in and out, uh, on, on Stanley there. So in my opinion, in a, not many years ago, if you had in and out. In and out, it would just create a much better flow in my mind. Plus it takes a real.
Yeah, but now you have that T-bone condition right here. If you had someone coming in and coming in. You create a lot of conflicting movements. So the intent is really to simplify. One in, one out, less curb cuts and more parking.
But then they all have to go the same way down Stanley, so that creates a lot of traffic down.
That is correct. That is correct. Oh, no, there, there's no question about that. But it's, they're either gonna all come in here, or all come in here. But if you start fixing this all, it, it just, we're gonna end up having to widen some of the, the turning aisles. And we're gonna lose parking. So this is the more efficient way to make a park, and park now, and maximize spaces.
Um, option three, I'm only, I'm so afraid. Um, but I just wanted to speak as the pastor of the First Reform Church, which, um, when we take the house down. Then our parking lot is gonna directly, you know, along a lot that, yeah. Right. I can, you know, I can, because Main Street is just there, I can, in my mind, if there are not good fencing, um. You know, high fence, people will try to cut if I go, so they'll go through our lots of Main Street. So I would just love to speak for defenses.
Understood.
Thank you.
Absolutely. For neighbors on all sides, there will be definitely some buffering, whether it be fences, trucks, things like that. I, I'm absolutely, absolutely. So, yes, some lights, but lights that the lot will be lit up enough. But not that it spills over into our neighbors', uh, you know, lots that they can't sleep at night. That is something that we, that we would be working with, uh, any of our surrounding neighbors. You know, we, we wanna make sure that it's lit up enough that it's safe. Uh, and things of that sort, but not so much that it's daytime in our neighboring, you know, neighbors' homes. Uh, at, at midnight. So absolutely. And with today's technologies and lighting, uh, it's pretty easy to. Make sure that the lighting is very angled and specific in particular areas.
What we're anticipating is an upgrade of the existing lighting. We are not proposing any lights in this area just because it spilled back in church and into your home.
Now, one block away over Valley Bank, this huge building that's being, being constructed. Does that building have enough spaces? And is it possible, it's only about a block away, right? Is it possible that, I think, that we're, we're building a lot, but, but it may serve other purposes as well? I mean, uh, i- i- is there, is there, two things. So one is the Valley Road. And then earlier on, you said that the teachers are currently parking in some other lot that they're gonna have to give up. Where, did you say that?
Okay, it's thirty-five Stevens Ave, the only little.
How many spaces are over there for teachers right now in the lot that they're gonna have to give up?
Oh, no, I, I, I don't know how many spaces they use on a daily basis. Twenty to twenty.
So, so, so what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, is, I don't know what, what's gonna happen is. That there are pieces of this puzzle that you really need to study. If there are twenty spaces in another lot that we're about to give up. Then that's twenty cars that are currently accommodated that have to go someplace else. And, and, and the numbers that you're dealing with are, are, are pretty tight. The other thing I, I, I'd like to understand is, the people who currently park at the, in the PC, in PNC Bank parking lot, who are they? Has anybody gone over there one day to figure out, are they there overnight? Are they there for an hour? Are they there for a day? Are they resident to the area? Who's parking there then?
For one, from engineering, the intent to maximize the spaces, that's what's done here. The operational aspects of this, coordination with the school, coordination with the businesses, I think that's all gotta work hand in hand. The design isn't gonna change. By operationally figuring out whether it's students or teachers or, or residents or patrons. Is irrelevant. The eighty-seven stalls, gonna be eighty-seven stall no matter how we do that. And then the operation. But I think here we should talk about options and ag ingress and egress. And then the next conversation is really the operation.
Yeah, but I don't, but, but the whole purpose of this thing was, was to facilitate people visiting local businesses. And if you put that often to the end, you know, because, and, and don't figure, and don't figure out, you know, this overall thing. You may wind up with a lovely parking lot that still doesn't help these local businesses.
Adding spaces, no matter what, is going to help everybody. All of the things that I mentioned earlier. There's, there's, there's no way it can. And if we gain thirty or thirty-five spaces or forty spaces from what we, what the lot currently accommodates. We're going, we're adding that many spaces, no matter what. And if we're going to be losing X number of spaces from thirty-five Stevens Ave. Regardless, we're still, if we don't do this, we're still, we're, you know, again, we're still netting thirty-five spaces, whatever the number is. Or forty spaces by developing this. By, by, you know, again, so there is. You, you're associating. Adding these spaces with whatever plan is ultimately decided, with all of these negative things that might come along with it. But the point here is, is what is the best plan that accommodates. All of the residents in this room and all of the residents not in this room. And anybody who might want to come here and all of the business owners who may not be here. Rather than the negative couple of things that may also come along with it. Whether that be some extra teachers parking here. Again, those teachers are parking somewhere right now. Whether it be. Uh, again, you know, the, the overflow that is there. Uh, again, adding spaces, having Stanley open or not, is what I want to hear from some of these residents right now. Because that's part of what this plan will ultimately entail. And again. That's really the concern that I need to address this evening. Because are there gonna be some teachers that ultimately park in this lot? I'm certain there are. Are there going to be some business owners that park in this lot? Certain there are. Again, you know, I, I, right now, addressing, will I address with the schools, some of the, you know? Limiting the number of teachers that park here? Yes, I certainly will. But I can't do that right here, right now. Have residents in this room who I can talk to about whether or not it's beneficial to leave Stanley open. Whether it's beneficial to close Stanley Street. And attempting to address that right now is really what I'm looking to do. Because I have the residents here who can give me their input to whether or not they think. They will be detrimental, ju- detrimentally affected with it open, or it will change their lives for the worse with it closed. And I want to hear from them right now about those things because I want to try to accommodate them the best I can. Zero. No, are they, right now? Right now? No. Right now, I, no. If there is ultimately, if they negotiate a, a deal with the municipality in the future. And by, by some sort of future deal with the municipality, um, there's, there are a number of spaces that they're permitted to utilize. Maybe, but right now, no. I, I, I just said there's no deal, so I, I can't, no one's approached me about it, so I can't answer the question. No, the deal that, no, to, to answer your question, that part of the question. The deal that we had with the bank was, if that building ceases operations as a bank, they forfeit all of their spaces. So since they have now ceased operating as a bank, they have forfeited all of their spaces to the municipality. So if the building gets sold and somebody purchases, and they approach the municipality and say, we would like X number of spaces designated. At that point, we could enter into negotiations to say, X number of spaces are then allocated to the building. But at this point, there has been, I mean, there's, I don't even know if there's a buyer for the building, so. No, because now they've already ceased operations as a bank now. So, and as far as I'm concerned, pursuant to the contract that we've entered into with them, they've ceased operations as a bank right now. Uh, so they have forfeited all of the spaces. Again, if a new purchaser negotiates with the municipality, at that time, it would be up for a future negotiation, but right now, there's none.
So what is it? From that, I was dying to agree. We played this a bus stop below up there. What happened there? They even put parking stand there, go right there, and all the parents being in the P N C lot, picking up their kids.
So on Stevens is where they're currently low.
They know that.
In front of the school.
Right.
They just park them when they're not being utilized, where that little yellow spot is missing it, middle of Ridge Base. There on Ridge is where they park them now, and that's where those eight or ten spaces are not utilized right now.
How do they get there?
I don't know the answer. So is there anyone that has any thoughts right now?
I'm a family or no family question. I do, thank you, yeah. So it's actually, I'm actually gonna flip it around. Uh, I mean, you guys just questioned that, but in option two, it was, it was that, um, uh, Serge, you said that it's not your preferred option directly, so I'm curious, was there a driver that said, like, was there something that you were exploring there to say, it might be better to have the ingress, like, on the street? Like, is there any benefit to this plan and a reason why we keep Stanley Street open to have the ingress?
The only reason why we thought about bringing the ingress, egress out of Stanley was to remove the turning traffic from Stevens. Obviously to limit any backups on the street. The trade-off is, this is in closer proximity to the street. The reasoning behind this not being preferred, in my opinion, is just that, safety issue.
I would also, I would also say, and here's my biggest concern with this. Every resident on Ridge, on Lincoln, is going to deal with every single vehicle that parks in this lot is either getting dumped, because when they exit this lot, they can't go back to Stevens. You have to turn left, and now you are automatically either turning south onto Ridge, or you're continuing down to Lincoln, and you're heading into Lincoln first, whatever the street you're heading into in the middle of town, you know, in, into that section of town. And the last thing I wanna see is additional vehicles from this parking lot being forced to go to Ridge, to Lincoln, to any of the streets in that area. And in my opinion, and again, I understand we're just exploring options here, this, in my opinion, is a terrible option. So, uh, I, I, again, I appreciate you preparing the job, but, yeah, it was, it was, again, it was, it was an option to be explored, but, but not the best one. It sticks. Thank you. Sure.
Can allow left turns onto Stevens, people exiting?
I think, I think the left turns onto Stevens are, uh, again, streaming traffic, you know, nobody is coming south down on Stevens, is a great option. You know why? Because if you're making a right turn onto Stevens, eventually you're gonna get backed up if the light is red. Left turns onto Stevens, the lot is continuing to empty and stay clear if that's happening, especially if there's a don't block the box and people are avoiding them. So.
It's like, it's free, it's, uh, still available, and, for, for those reasons, why I say let people exit onto Stevens and Stanley, and have people go in different directions, left, okay?
Not Stanley?
No, no, I'm gonna look at that by something, Stevens.
That's only.
Yeah, thirty teachers from Dayton. And one exit. In the little.
But we guess that's why, are this residents in the, in that immediate area, and that's where I wanna hear from you about whether Stanley is part of this plan or not, and whether or not vehicles are dumped onto the street or not is, again, the discussion and direction I wanna head from here. So you're, you're ground zero, so I, I guess you're gonna do what you're.
Nobody respects that, do not exit, we get what, everybody drive the way through it.
So people had frequently down Stanley against the, the one way? Yeah, huh?
Thank you, thanks, Stanley, that was especially lower traffic, I mean, Stevens is the main road, Main Street is the main road. Stanley Street is almost a cul-de-sac, you know what I mean? It's a small street that doesn't need all that traffic going through. So, Stevens, the only set.
Okay, and I guess going, uh, I mean, to take a informal poll here, but, and, and if, you know, if people are inclined to kinda just give opinions here, I'm happy to hear everybody out here. Is anyone else that has an opinion?
I want from me, we're going to the municipality to add, but that road to be closed, for safety issues, this. Now, if you bring them out on Stanley at three o'clock in the afternoon, you've got kids coming out, and there's all walkers all over those streets. So now you're adding traffic, that's more than just the parents taking them up now. You've got traffic coming down there if you're using Stanley as opposed to people. And it was always a safety issue, people coming down Stanley at, at school times for the kids, because it's their kids, they just walk. So we have, I mean, I don't know if you remember that, Audrey, do you remember that? We had talked about that, you know, and that was years and years ago.
So the contract, so it was the school's plan years ago to have a town abandon Stanley as a street?
Just for safety, just because inevitably, the kids were all, you know, getting out of school, walking down towards Main Street, getting on buses, and then you had walkers coming in continuously. Sometimes it would be the parents trying to pick them up. They eliminated the parents picking them up there, and that was kind of the plan they ended up doing. That's why everybody's on, I guess that's.
Go on, again.
And that's kind of, uh, what I'm.
I think you have to err on the side of safety. You, I was at the library yesterday, and then they had fire. And I purposely went the other way, just so I didn't have to, I know they do go, I'm not gonna go in that way. Alright, we have to err on the side of.
True.
I think from just a financial point of view, um, option one and two, really only net, what, like nine additional spots? So if you're saying the whole project is like, just put a nice little bow on a million dollars, we're spending a million dollars for nine spots. So the only one that makes sense is option number three, because at least you're getting more spots for the money.
Yeah, and you know.
On a pure loaning standpoint, I agree.
Yeah, I agree also. You know, something else, and, there's something else that I was actually brought to, not brought to our attention, someone's already noticed. Um, and I wanna just kinda mention that one. Another thing that we need to take, although here we're saying eighty-seven total stalls, that number may be off by one or two, maybe two, maybe some incredible stalls. There's one or two locations in this photo, it's hard to tell from the aerial shot, where there are actually poles that are holding P S E and G wires. Uh, maybe, yeah, around right here. Uh, there are long, a good strip somewhere. So it may be a good location for actually to have a pedestrian walkway for anyone that's in that lot that may be heading toward the school, to create an A D A ramp up, because the topography does change a little bit. So there might be a pole there, we can put some concrete bollers, that might be, you know, a little decorative, and an A D A ramp up. So we may be down one or two spaces out of this whole thing in full disclosure. Um, but again, I, I do agree with you that there's, you know, this is absolutely the maximum number of spaces. Um, again, a- addressing all of the other concerns, those, I think can absolutely be done. Sure, go on, Ben?
Is it safe to land on school? If you have access now to all schools, I've been, I've been here since I, you know, long, I.
In the, with fire department, what, that?
Yes.
Yeah, so actually, I guess, I've actually spoken with fire department and the police department about both of these things. And one of the things that I've learned, because I know nothing about fire matics, is that one thing that you would never do is actually park a fire vehicle in the event of a fire. As close as Stanley Street is, you would never park a vehicle that close to a building during a fire. It's part of the, there's a term for it, a collapse zone of the building.
But now you're gonna be a whole, little way.
Yes, which is actually safer, because the, the building itself wouldn't ever fall onto, uh, the fire truck that far away. And they run hoses, you know, to buildings, so it's, it's actually safer to be further from a building than that much closer. And ladders, uh, actually, you know, can get that far, and being a little bit further is safer, uh, than being closer. So I, I learned that, uh, as part of actually these lots being designed. So very good question. Sure.
We have access around the whole school.
Well, there's still pedestrian access, because there would actually be. Oh, no. And, and, and actually, so, uh, another good point, I think actually limiting vehicular access around schools is actually a preferred option nowadays, unfortunately. Um, because, you know, I, I think people with bad intentions use vehicles for, as, as, with ill will, rather than, yes, you know, yeah, so.
Yeah, so, um, when I, that's what liaison with the school district, I be superintendent about this specific item together, closing Stanley Street. She could not have been more interested in doing this because of the safety aspect for the children that currently still out onto that sidewalk, and while there's traffic driving past them and they're not paying attention at three o'clock every single day. Uh, she's concerned about their convenience with this. All that, because it keeps the stationary cars here where the kids still out of school and pushes the moving cars back to the tent or something. And so, i- if there is any question about whether or not what the former board of education law is in relation to what the terms of our general laws, that is consistent, that this is a much safer option.
Now, it would actually be in the parking lot itself, if there were any hoses that needed to make their way into the building, they would just run it right between a car and, and run into a building, and a ladder would make its way right, I mean, the ladders are planted, they'd go right over a a vehicle to the, to the roof of the, of the building.
That's between the store wider, and, and by, so.
Yeah, it's twenty, it's twenty-four feet wide, or there's, we have some roadways that in town that are, uh, that are, yeah, that are, that are, it's wide, it's twenty-four feet wide, so absolutely, it's plenty wide to accommodate. So.
Doesn't make sense, is it possible to, uh, close Stanley during the school hours, make it larger, and stuff at night and weekends?
So my concern with that would be, in the design things, we would end up creating a hard barrier here in the form of a guardrail, something decorative, something, something military, and I'm not sure yet.
Right.
To have those way that. Yeah, we're looking to make some hard infrastructure changes, not just paint. So I, I would say from a operational standpoint, very difficult, and from an engineering standpoint, I don't think it would be a good idea, because now you'd be creating just painted lines and I, I just don't think it would be feasible. I think it would be more driver confusion and more pedestrian confusion. I think you really need a natural break, considering the issue that the school is raised regarding the children spilling out there. Yeah, it, there needs to be a barrier, so that, that would be something designing specifically in this area, so uh, if we end up being in the loop, couldn't take it out, yeah. So the road actually meanders just a little bit right here.
This is, yeah, this is the roadway currently.
So I would.
Right where this handicap spot is on the, on the graph. You know, this is where the lot currently ends, right here, where this arrow is, and where this handicap spot is drawn on this, this graphic, this is the current roadway. Any other questions? We've gone a thirteen hour and a half, another one, I think. Sure, back there? From Stevens Ave, you're referring to up here? The parallel, the two parallel parking spaces? Yeah, so that's a great question. There are two parallel parking spaces now between the entrance and the exit to the current parking lot. And I've never seen two spaces create more driver confusion in my life. Uh, so, and I say that because sometimes there are cars parking those spaces that are legitimately parked. And then a couple of cars pull up into the right lane along Stevens Ave to make the right onto Main Street, and then a new car will pull up and assume that that car that's actually parking the parking space is waiting in line to make, is on and ready to move in that lane to make the next right turn and pull up behind it, but they're actually parked. When the light turns green, and then four or five more cars stacked behind it, the light turns green, the first four cars go, and that next car's parked. So it is part of the intention to remove the two parking spaces that are there, and anyone that wants to park should utilize this parking lot with all these new beautiful parking spaces. So, so, yeah, let's keep that traffic from moving along Stevens Ave, absolutely. Now, we can, we can, we can probably get it to a sooner rather than later, right? Absolutely. I'm gonna go with, sure, I, I, I totally agree with you.
Get rid of, nice, uh, nice job, please, to get in one of these. Just a couple things to offer, and I understand the ten by twenty spaces, that's great, that's an ideal standard for shopping mall, but, you know, um, if this didn't succeed, if we, if it was reduced to nine by eighteen, would that yield some buffering, some additional buffering without losing spaces? I'm seeing, like, I think the, the, the school parking lot that we did at school two is a little devoid of students. Okay, there's a lot of parking, and that's smaller than this site. But just, it'll be, there's a lot of asphalt, there's an opportunity maybe to put some tree diaries or to have some buffering. I, I think if you look at Memorial School in total, on Total Road, they did a very nice job of integrating landscape, which is throughout the entire park, and it makes a huge difference. Seeing the trees there and seeing the buffering and the decorative fencing, it would be, um, just a comment that I would offer, but, uh, it's a great job of, of trying to create some.
We can shrink the spaces, that makes a lot of sense. I wouldn't say we yield any more parking, but absolutely, we can utilize that for some aesthetic enhancement step, makes sense?
Uh, we're gonna offer, you know, something else on aesthetic, where we have a new decorative sign, maybe a landscape bed, or rather, a horseshoe around that, because it would give some green space and create some identity for the space.
We were talking about that, that's gonna be addressed. About the two giant trees that are existing that are now on the running part. Giant trees. Big one. End up having to be removed. They're gonna be right in my driveway. No, not, not in this current configuration.
I believe one of them is, I believe one of them is currently dead, um, and one is, no?
And we'll certainly take a look at it, but, uh, no promises. My concern is obviously.
And we thought about solar panels over all those parking stalls.
Not, it's all big monoculars. Not in this space. At this point, we're just looking at service parking, that it can always be retrofitted after, doesn't need to necessarily be in now. But if you change the nine by. No. No, I mean, the, the foundations for those, for the steel, you can actually. The space here or there, sure, it's possible. Well. We're fighting a lot of spaces, no spaces, you know, at this point right now, it's not comfortable. Understood. I'll make your friend, by the way. I mean, it becomes as much an issue of what to do than it does any deal. Is that from, when you have a solar panel on, and it's powering that, because it's, but, when you have this sort of situation, you have to give the power to municipal properties, it becomes very complicated, even the solar companies. Saying that is extremely complicated to deal with it.
Return, I can't get power, I can't cost, I can't cost.
I'm just letting you know, it, it, you did, you did seem to.
Correct, yes, yes. So anytime we refer to closing Stanley, we are only referring to the section between Stevens. Correct, yes, yes, so anytime we refer to closing Stanley, we are only referring to the section between Stevens and Ridge. It would still remain open, written down, two-way, at least in theory, uh, between Ridge and Lincoln. If, uh, you and a couple other neighbors there decided it was an absolute night way, nightmare to have two-way, and you all. Uh, you know, approached me or the council and said, this needs to be changed, uh, you know, they could absolutely be considering the future. If it was something that you, you know, you all wanted to see changed for, you know, one-way traffic. Again, right now, I believe the only, you know, the only detriment to changing it to a one-way would be two to six. Of you that live on, on Stanley in that little section, so. Again, for now, I think a two-way makes the most sense there, uh, so that you can exit towards Lincoln. And in the future, if you want to see that changed, again, you could talk to myself or the council about it, we can consider that. Anyone else have real comments about this or, or something they want to, you know, provide us information on?
Thank you for holding this meeting. Been in this town a long time, I've learned more about parking lots than I ever knew in my life.
I'm not too into that.
And I think, I think the, the, the input that you got, particularly from the residents, you know, who are mostly affected. It's really terrific, and, and, and I hope this is a blueprint for the, for the planning in the future, so thank you, May, I really, I really appreciate it.
And I know we're, we're approaching, um, past the hour and a half, I'll take one or two more, and I'm happy to talk to anyone, you know, after this, off the record. I just don't want to have everybody still sitting here after ninety minutes, uh, feeling like they have to continue, council, I don't have a. Yeah, so here's my, here's my thought for now, it seems like, is it fair to say that at least amongst everybody in the room? Option three is the most preferred option here, is that a fair statement? Yeah, sure, is that, is that why? Well, I think, yes, all right, I see, I see, so here's what I think we're going to do. Um, I think I'm going to ask that the engineer, um, move with a little bit more of a firm design. On this particular option here, because there's still a lot of, I think, question marks here, there's, you know, the pole itself isn't taken into consideration, you know, where the light, uh, the, uh. PSE and G pole is, you know, some things not taken into consideration in this plan, again, this was just kind of a snapshot idea. Um, I think once you get a little bit more of a strong plan, maybe what we'll do is I'll collect a little bit of contact information from, from people in the room who may want to have some, some follow-up. And maybe we'll have a, a mini meeting with residents who are directly impacted in that area. Uh, and, and continue to proceed again, especially with immediate neighbors, so that we can absolutely ensure that any, you know, immediate concerns are addressed moving forward. Uh, because again, I, I, I want to make sure that this is something that, you know, again, takes all of those concerns into consideration. So we will absolutely do that moving forward, we'll make sure that those concerns are addressed. But I also want to be able to do so with a more concrete plan, and it's not just a, you know, Google Earth image with a, a drawing dropped on top of it. We'll have a little bit more of a specific plan, uh, together, so that we have a little bit more specific answers to provide.
So, so from a process standpoint, the engineering processes, next, next step for us is really to create a base. Base map, there's a series of surveys, field visits, to really get down to the nitty-gritty of exactly what's out there. Including locations of utilities, utility poles and everything else that's there. And then from that, we create a base map, and then from there, we actually design everything so it's actually to scale. Actions fits and clearances are all accounted for very precisely. What you're looking at here is a representation called Google Earth, as the mayor said. It's a good roadmap, it's a good starting point, now all the details that go behind that have to be put together.
Anybody watching that, maybe watching on Zoom, or maybe watching this recording, uh, later. I can certainly reach out, uh, to me by email or by phone, and, you know. I, I will certainly forward those, or respond to those concerns, or inform the engineer, uh, to get those addressed. Uh, but what we can do is, again, we can all be in touch moving forward, we have to host another little, uh, mini get-together, whether it be here, whether it be at town hall. Uh, in the small conference room, we can do that to make sure that we, again, just get all the little issues resolved. Uh, but again, moving forward with, I believe, option three, as sort of the, the roadmap moving forward. Um, we can, we can come up with more of a finite and final plan. And, uh, I'll meet with the schools in the interim, and we can, uh, have some more final answers moving forward. So in wrapping up, are there any final major questions that we should be aware of? And again, I'm happy to stick around for a couple minutes to address any other last minute questions, but.
Another question, just with regard to the location of EDS and spaces.
Yes, we can definitely figure out where the electric vehicle spaces will be, uh, addressed and installed in this lot. Um, there are numbers of them, you know, to be installed, so we'll find out, we'll figure out the particulars on that for electric vehicles. Um, and I think we're.
Any importance with the RSI is there are requirements for the actual spaces, the may bring spaces, this will. And what we just didn't show there for.
Yeah, well, go and address all that, it's not a problem, okay, we'll get, we'll get them addressed in the future. Yeah, so, absolutely, so, well, thank you everyone for attending, I'll stick around for a question.